Okay, great. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting Public Hearing for Tuesday, June 10, 2025. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office has reviewed all items on the agenda. You have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters, and more appropriate proper posting has been made.
Great, thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No disclosures.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move to item two, which is our land use meeting agenda items, and there are no items under land use for today. So we'll move right to item three, which is our public hearing agenda items. The first item is 3A, Happy Canyon filing four, tracks F and G, zone map change, project file DR 2024-005. Trevor Bedford, senior planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Trevor.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Trevor Bedford, representing Planning Services. The project number is DR 2024-005. The property owner is the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. The request is for a zone map change from a state residential to open space conservation for two tracks totaling 12.1 acres of property located within Happy Canyon filing four. The zone district map change process is described in zoning resolution section 1112. This zone map change falls under the rezoning of land to open space conservation district. The process begins with the submission of a request. In this case, because the property is owned by Douglas County, the Board of County Commissioners reviewed this project at two work sessions and directed staff to move forward with the request. The zone map change request is then processed by staff. Following a review period, the request is then considered by the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. No referral agencies objected to the proposal to rezone tracks F and G. The Happy Canyon Homeowners Association and one nearby property owner submitted written support of the request. Douglas County Open Space and Natural Resources responded to the request with full support. The Planning Commission heard the request at its June 2, 2025, public hearing and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Members of the Happy Canyon Homeowners Association spoke in favor of the rezoning. The site identified by a red star is located in central Douglas County within the CMP High Plateau non-urban subarea. The parcel outlined in red is track F. This is approximately 2.7 acres and generally surrounded by agricultural and residential properties. This parcel is track G outlined in red. This parcel is approximately 9.4 acres and generally surrounded by agricultural and residential properties. Property within the town of Castle Rock is adjacent to the southeast. This aerial map shows the locations of tracks F and G. In 1963, four tracks were deeded to Douglas County as part of the Happy Canyon filing four subdivision. The Happy Canyon Homeowners Association requested that tracks F, G, and J be rezoned to open space conservation district. Happy Canyon Homeowners Association noted that tracks F and G have important wildlife habitat. The Board of County Commissioners reviewed this request at the March 4, 2025, and May 6, 2025, work sessions, and directed staff to proceed with the rezoning of tracks F and G. Staff has evaluated the zone map change request. This zone map change rezones county-owned property to open space conservation that has been historically used as wildlife habitat. In staff's assessment, this meets the eligibility criteria. Section 112.06 of the zoning resolution sets forth the board's action as part of a zone map change request. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to take questions on the staff report if the board wishes.
Trevor, thanks for that presentation, and my compliments to planning staff for sharing with us how the Planning Commission voted, providing the comprehensive master plan excerpt, having the larger-scale maps. We know exactly where it's at in addition to all of the great information within the packet, including the referral comments. So that's really handy and well appreciated. Let me open it up to the board for any questions for staff.
I have no further questions. I mean, we, as staff reported, this came before us on a couple work sessions. We know we've got support of the community, so I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, this has come before us, but maybe if you could just maybe step back for a moment from the kind of just the big picture of what it means to dedicate something as, to dedicate the land in this way, as residential open space. What does that mean for the people?
Well, I think this originally came about with some concerns about the potential for future development on these properties. You know, they were, in 1963, when Happy Canyon filing four was subdivided, we didn't have, right now we have a cash-in-lieu option. So if we say you can pay a certain amount of money based on appraisal for parks fees and open space, it was just a percentage of land in 1963. So they just dedicated this land to the county. And it wasn't really specified what it was for. Over the time, it's been used, you know, as open space and just, I think, with development in the town of Castle Rock coming closer and closer to Happy Canyon, I think there's just some concerns that a residential property could either be developed further into several lots, or it could be, you know, if someone wanted to rezone it to something else. So I think rezoning to open space, it just kind of protects that and keeps the value of the wildlife habitat and everything that they've had there for the past 60 or so years.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And protecting open space and applying the legal means to protect that open space has been, time and time again, a theme of this board, and this appears to be one more step in that direction in a small piece of Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. And I don't have any questions either. This is just a perfect example of what historically Douglas County has really appreciated doing. We're big private property rights proponents, and we often say, you know, if you own the land, we want to make sure you have the greatest measure of freedom to be able to do on your property what you see fit within the parameters of our zoning resolution. But what's nice is, you know, when citizens can come forward and say, look, this for our community, this parcel, whatever shape and size, wherever in the community, has been significant to our neighbors for years. This is a place that our kids consider a park or a parcel where we walk our pets. And for us to be able to meet those market forces head-on and take it down as open space, what a wonderful opportunity. And that's such a win-win for citizens. And frankly, the reason why our county with the Pike National Forest is north of 51% open space, a value that I know our citizens really appreciate. So I like what I'm hearing. I won't predetermine anything before citizen comment. Anything additional for the board before I open it up for citizen comment? Okay. Any citizen comment with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am?
So I pulled up the, I'm sorry, Joe Campbell Highlands Ranch. I pulled up the map, you know, where Happy Canyon is. And, you know, it does. It gives the integrity on that corridor. It's also a highway, you know, it's, there's roads and people's lives and livelihood. And so to change the dynamics, just like we had just maybe, I forgot the timeline, but about that Perry's Park or the sports thing that was such a, you know, an uproar for a lot of people in Highlands Ranch that said, you're going to take away our bird, the birds we hear, and I do, I hear the most beautiful birds on my porch. And you'll reshape what we built, what our houses were about, what our lives are about. You rebuild, you know, a stadium like Babe Ruth, come, build, or the Field of Dreams, whatever that was, come, and we'll build, right? Sometimes building isn't right. And I had another thought, and when I look at what we're doing and the conservation of our beautiful land of Colorado, and some don't appreciate the beauty. And I fished in Sedalia with my dad. My dad died 16 years ago, and he was my hero. He never came up. And I guess I got that, I was one of the four daughters that gave that, I got the endurance and the strength. And I saw my dad, what he sacrificed for our family. And when he died, no one spoke of him. Why? Because he was the root. He was the strength. And when you change the dynamics of a central community, a place, people, you're changing the whole livelihoods of people. So I appreciate protecting this tract land around these people's homes that they've lived for a long time, and the beauty of driving down that corridor by Happy Canyon, or the 87 and the 25. So one thought I had, and maybe all of us can reflect, or I just can reflect, or maybe it was just my thought. But the question I asked myself last week, my home flooded, and I'm here for a longer time than I thought, and I'm renting over there. It's been crazy paying for hotels and just a month without water in my home. But I'm doing it, and almost gave me the challenge of a life to overcome and be a woman. So I think I'm a woman now. But how far do we bend? How, do you bend truth? Do you bend truth? And when I think about the foundation of a house, and I had a hammer with my father, who had built fences and four-by-fours in our basement, and I also had dresses and lipstick and dances and soccer and dolls. But do you bend truth? And when you drive a nail into a foundation or a plywood or the central of a house, that nail needs to be straight. How far are we bending truth?
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment on this item? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. Rich West, 4785 North Mesa. I'm the current president of the Happy Canyon Homeowners Association. I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with everybody. This has been a real nice, you know, venture, so to speak, in trying to get this property rezoned. We've got great support. I really appreciate it. The neighbors appreciate it, and we just thank you for all your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate your leadership and your community. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am. Okay, I thought maybe we saw another comment from the gallery. If there isn't any comment in the gallery, I'll open it up for any citizen comment online.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. Thanks, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Rich and Liz for bringing this to our attention and working with staff. You know, Rich, I'm really glad, you know, it was a positive experience for you. We don't always get that with some of these zoning requests from folks. We do make them go through the traps, but thanks for working with us on it. I think it's a great idea. I very much speak in favor. And if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve Happy Canyon filing four, tracks F and G, zone map change, project file is DR 2024-005.
I second that motion.
Great. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. Congratulations. Enjoy, yeah. Our next item under our public hearing agenda items is a zoning resolution waiver for Inverness filing nine, lot three, project file US 2024-001. And we have Mike Pasika, principal planner, presenting for staff, I believe, unless Jeanette Baer is doing that. Okay, Jeanette, welcome.
Yes. Good afternoon, Jeanette Baer, representing Planning Services, filling in for Mike, who's on vacation. The request is a zoning resolution waiver for Inverness filing nine, lot three, project number is US 2024-011. Tower 22 LLC is the owner, and the applicant is Homeland Development. The request is for approval of a waiver of the prohibition of multifamily residential in the noise-sensitive zone in section 1906.02.12 and table 19.1 of the Douglas County zoning resolution. The waiver request is being made in conjunction with an application for a use-by-special review to allow multifamily use in the light industrial zone district. Should the BCC approve the waiver request, the USR application will come back before the BCC for a discussion on the specifics of that application. Whoops. Regarding the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission heard the request at its May 19, 2025, public hearing. Three people from the public spoke against the USR application, specifically the zoning waiver request to allow multifamily use on the site. An adjacent property owner expressed concerns with security as they are a government contractor and must adhere to federal standards. They also noted concerns with neighborhood compatibility, trespass onto their property, and noise impacts from the Centennial Airport on future tenants of the project. Two other members of the public commented that they did not support the zoning waiver request due to year-round noise impacts, unacceptable levels of lead from airport airplane exhaust, and concern that increasing the number of residential units near the airport could lead to more citizen noise complaints. A representative from Centennial Airport testified that the airport strongly opposes the zoning waiver request due to the close proximity of the site to the airport's busiest training runway. They also noted the project's inconsistency with the county's zoning regulations, safety concerns, and other impacts associated with numerous aircraft affecting the site, including but not limited to noise, smoke, dust, fumes, and vibrations. The Planning Commission recommended denial of the zoning waiver request by a vote of seven to one. Commissioners felt that several, if not all, of the waiver approval standards had not been met and cited noise, dust, fumes, and safety concerns as factors that made the location unsuitable for residential use. The commission also voted to continue the notice of public hearing on the USR to July 7, 2025, should the board approve the waiver request today. Section 1906 of the zoning resolution lists land use restrictions for each of the noise and safety zones in the Centennial Airport Review Area Overlay District, commonly known as CARA. Specifically, section 1906.02 of the zoning resolution states that residential uses and other noise-sensitive uses as described in table 19.1 are not allowed in the noise-sensitive zone. A copy of table 19-1 is included on this slide for reference. Under the column of noise-sensitive zone, you can see that multifamily residential is identified as a use prohibited in this section. Per table 19.1, multifamily residential is allowed within the noise mitigation zone with suitable noise attenuation, including building materials, construction methods, and building design as provided in the IBC. This is the comprehensive master plan vicinity map. The site is located in the north-central portion of Douglas County, northeast of I-25 and the Highway 470 interchange. I think you can see it here with the red star. It's in the primary urban area of the county. This is an excerpt from the zoning map, as outlined in red. I think you can see it right here. The site is in the east portion of Inverness, directly west of Centennial Airport runway 17R/35L. The magenta hatching represents the noise-sensitive zone, which prohibits multifamily residential uses. As illustrated on this map, the noise-sensitive zone overlays approximately three-fourths of the subject property, and all of the building is in that noise-sensitive zone, the existing building. The noise mitigation zone, represented by the green hatching, overlays a portion of the subject property to the west, and that's an area that does allow multifamily with certain types of noise attenuation measures. This aerial view shows the property within the context of other surrounding parcels within Inverness. To the north is an existing office building, and to the south is a private school. The service road for Centennial Airport is immediately east of the subject property, and runway 17R/35L is approximately 450 feet from the eastern property line. So we're towards this direction. This is kind of a closer-in look of the CARA map. You can kind of see the different areas that are regulated. You can see the project site here, located in that magenta area, which is the noise-sensitive zone. Here's some views of the site. This photo is looking east into the site, towards the existing building. This photo is looking south along Inverness Drive South from the main entrance to the site. This photo is looking north from the south property line at the existing parking area in the rear of the project site. And this photo is taking, is taken looking northwest towards the rear of the existing building and parking area. And finally, one more. This photo is looking northeast from the south property line of the project site towards Centennial Airport, which is located more up in this area, above the property. Pursuant to section 122 of the Douglas County zoning resolution, waivers may be approved only upon the finding, based on the evidence presented, that the following criteria are met. A full analysis of these criteria is included in the staff report. Just wanted to note that the project did go out for referral, the entire USR package, but we provided you the comments specific to the waiver request, and I think you have those at the DIAS as well. We did receive comments from the Arapahoe County Airport Authority and the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA. Those comments were attached to the staff report, and you also have them at your chairs. The Airport Authority stated it opposes the development and noted that new residences would lie within 0.16 miles from the airport's busiest training runway and adjacent to the departure end of runway 17R and the arrival side of runway 35L. The Airport Authority noted the associated effects of aircraft over flights, including noise, smoke, dust, fumes, and vibrations. The airport did recommend a seven-day noise test to verify that interior noise level attenuation could be accomplished at or below 45 day-to-night average DNL, and that the applicant record a navigation easement and provide corresponding information on all recorded plots and plans. The applicant did provide a navigation easement, or will provide a navigation easement, and has accomplished the seven-day noise test. The FAA stated it's strong opposition to the development due to its close proximity to Centennial Airport and that runway in particular, and the potential negative impacts this development may have on persons and property on the ground and the safety and utility of the national airspace system. The FAA considers residential development adjacent to an airport to be a non-compatible land use. The proposed development lies inside the 65 DNL average noise contour and just outside the 70 DNL noise contour. The FAA considers any residential development within the 65 DNL contour to be incompatible. We did have the county's noise consultant review all the noise studies provided by the applicant, including the requested seven-day noise test. The consultant found that acceptable interior noise levels could be met. Staff has evaluated the waiver request in accordance with the approval findings set forth in section 122.03 of the zoning resolution. Should the board find that all the waiver approval criteria are met, staff proposes the following conditions be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition one, prior to final approval of the USR application, the applicant shall record a navigation easement on the property. Condition two, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall update the east side of the existing building to bring the interior DNL limit to below 45 DNL using one of the two recommended design implementations from the sound level measurement study conducted by Engineering Dynamics on April 17, 2025. And the third condition of approval, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. I did want to just mention that should the board approve the waiver request, a fourth condition of approval could be added, which would continue the public hearing on the full USR request for the residential development, which is going to go back to the Planning Commission if the waiver's approved on July 7, and the board's hearing could be continued to July 22 at 2:30, should you decide to move ahead with the waiver today. That concludes my presentation. The applicant does have a presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Otherwise, Andrew Baker with Baseline Corporation is here to represent the project.
Great. Well, thank you, Jeanette. Thank you for covering for Mike. I feel like in my years as a commissioner and as a planning commissioner, it's been a little while since I've seen you. But you do a great job, as always.
Thank you.
Let me ask if-
The applicant, oh, also, there were five letters in support of the project that were received yesterday, I believe. I think the applicant is going to hand these out, but I can hand them out as well.
We can receive those through the county attorney as an exhibit right now. I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
No questions.
Commissioner?
I do know, I know you mentioned sound. The FFA raised serious concerns, but in regard to the sound, you said sound and vibration. Is there an actual vibration that close to the runway?
That is what the FAA and the Airport Authority have noted, is that there is vibration associated with the plane's landing and taking off. But you could certainly ask them that question as well, as I think they are here today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So I have many questions, but I'll reserve those following the applicant's presentation, if the applicant would like to come forward.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Thank you all. My name is Andrew Baker. I'm a senior planner for Baseline Engineering Corporation, and I'm a resident of Denver, Colorado. Baseline Engineering is a Colorado-based company. We have offices in Golden, Colorado, Fort Collins, Colorado Springs, as well as Steamboat. And I am here today, Jeanette, do you think I point up here or down here? I'm here today with Homeland Development, the applicant's team and developer. We have Mike Swisher, the CEO, as well as Karen Kennedy, the director of construction, with us. Craig Clark, the owner's rep, was able to attend at the Planning Commission hearing, but unfortunately, he got caught up on a layaway going down to Miami to begin his active service. But all- But also on the team, we have Drexel and Beryl as our civil engineers. Stuart McGregor of Engineering Dynamics, who took care of our sound study, as well as Papa's Architecture. We had put together the Inverness Overlook MUSR application, went through that process, reviewing with the county, which Jeanette just did a great job of reviewing. So I'll probably skip over quite a lot of this. I would be more than happy to go into great detail on any slide or anything here. Please let me know if you have any questions, but I'll do my best to keep things concise because I know that we're all busy. This process and proposal involves an adaptive reuse of an existing three-story commercial building located in the Inverness Office Park. That property is located adjacent to another multifamily development just to the west across Inverness Drive South, as well as a private school, Christian Academy, Colorado Christian Academy to the south, and several other similar office flex buildings to the north, and of course, as we know, the airport to our east. The Inverness area is a developed one in the county. As Jeanette mentioned, it's one of the highly urban areas that has been built out for several decades and has been existing as a mixed-use area with both employment, opportunities for recreation, housing, as well as schools and other public uses. We believe as the applicant's team that the, our proposal will provide the highest and best use of this property, as many of these office buildings in Inverness South are currently underutilized. This trend began back when the housing market crash happened in 2008 and has been further exacerbated by COVID. We all know that many of these buildings are being underutilized. We have infrastructure here and a vibrant community that could benefit from some additional and usable space. Our proposed site plan is shown here, though it doesn't show much. As I mentioned, everything has already been built. There will be some improvements that would hopefully be made, but I did just want to notate the two parking lots, both to the east and west of us, both accessed off of Inverness Drive South. The parking lot in the rear is accessed through a shared access drive recorded by easement that moves through the north in the property at 325 Inverness. The proposal includes 53 units. The first floor remains as office flex space, and there are a few tenants that are in there now. I believe one is a theater school and another that Mike might have to remind me of later. Proposed density, parking, utilities, access, all of these meet current county standards as, once again, they have been existing and been just fine for several, several years. The move for adaptive reuse projects, especially for unused offices, has had a lot of headway in the planning world. The American Planning Association magazine has published a few articles in the recent months citing very successful projects all over the country, from Pennsylvania to New Jersey, Texas. It's a tool that's embraced all over. And noting a mix of affordable and market-rate housing projects, it's really the underused and vacant buildings that benefit the most. Unlocking suburban housing potential is even greater. The pragmatic and dual-purpose solution to revitalizing commercial corridors, unlike adaptive reuse projects that take place in the city or in older parts of the, in older areas, Class C buildings will be usually utilized and take much more work, money, effort to redesign, to kind of refix into a modern space. These suburban Class A and B properties are typically smaller square footage. They're located on high-value land, and so making that shift to residential is an intensified and very efficient use of that space. These articles cite everything that is applicable to ours. Convenient access to major transit hubs, highway networks, and employment centers. Renters looking for modern amenities and high-quality living spaces. Suburban conversions usually have modern HVAC systems, elevators, and adaptable layouts. That's especially the case here when we are trying to look at more viable land uses for this space. Once again, more successful examples cited all over the country. So we've used these tips, and we've used all of our professional opinions, best practices, and industry standards to come to the conclusion that this is the most viable and productive use of this land. But at the same time, we do understand that we're on a bit of a regulatory knife-edge. And we did meet with the county, and we're fully aware of the light industrial zone districts' regulations, the status of multifamily residential as a use by special review within that zone district, and also the added layer of the Centennial Airport review. After meeting with the county for a pre-application meeting, they did suggest that we meet with the airport, which we did. And these graphics that you've seen a couple of times will continue to show up, but they, we understood all of their perspectives on the matter. Rolling back just a little bit, the noise-sensitive zone is dictated by the line you see there, said DNL 65. When analyzing a noise source such as the airport, we're going to use DNL day/night average sound levels to measure that. It takes a number of readings over a long period of time to measure an average, as opposed to just kind of measuring the peaks. But, you know, essentially, that's just the metric for how loud we are. That 65 to 70 DNL zone is what has been indicated as the noise-sensitive zone within the CARRI use district. As Jeanette had mentioned, all of our review, all of the code language that is regarding this property and the impacts of the airport is based on those sound impacts. So we have heard some, we've heard statements about noise and vibration and odor and pollution, and while I'm not arguing that those things exist, they have never been presented to us in any kind of scientifical format or with any data that shows that to be an unsafe level. However, in regards to the outdoor sound levels, clearly, we can't affect the outdoor attenuation of that noise. So we were forced to look at other regulatory options. The FAA's regulation does state that no residential gets placed within 65 DNL. However, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Affairs has a bit more of a nuanced definition to this, where they create a scale where normally acceptable, normally unacceptable, or always unacceptable areas exist, and that if you can create indoor sound levels that are comfortable and safe, that, to the Urban Housing and Urban Affairs Department, that is acceptable for housing. This is what our sound engineer used as industry best practice to prove safety within this building. Those are the metrics and the science that was reviewed by county staff, reviewed by sound engineers, and all found to meet county criteria. Once again, happy to get into any of the detailed numbers, but essentially, what we found with our first study was that we met the interior DNIs of 45 to be considered safe and acceptable per our study. As Jeanette mentioned, we did do a follow-up that's called a single-event level study, which does just take into those kind of peaks a little bit more. And we did find that in certain rooms, on certain days, there was a spike above 45 up to 50. So that's where we get the recommendations from our own study that talks about the windows as being the best way to mitigate that. Essentially, noise intrusion comes through windows because of heat and loss, and the STC ratings of our building, which are a bit outdated, of 36, those just need to be upgraded to a level of 45 to 50 in order to keep those, those rooms that are only on the east facade of the building facing the airport to be back down below DNL and the acceptable levels. I would love to talk about conformance with the comprehensive master plan. I am a Colorado planner. I deeply respect this process, and we are only here because of Douglas County's commitments to private property owners being able to pursue their own land uses. We understand that this is a bit of a knife-edge here, but we do feel like we've provided the science and the backup that do meet all of these standards. My understanding is that if we didn't meet every one of these, we couldn't have made it past staff review and be standing in front of you today. Mike Pasika is not here. I don't want to speak for him, but as dictated in his staff report, we feel that we conform with every one of these. All 15 of the goals and intent that are within the CMP, once again, I can skip past this for the moment, but please feel free if we'd like to discuss this anymore. The same goes for the Douglas County zoning resolution. We do believe that we conform with all of these. We agree with all of staff's findings, that every one of these has been met. We do understand that there is a further USR hearing to be had, and I believe that some of the objections that we've heard are more applicable to a USR or a site plan-type discussion, rather than specifically the noise-sensitive zone and the waiver of prohibiting multifamily on that property. So I'd like to speak to a second about safety versus nuisance. As Jeanette had mentioned, the public, the objections that we received from the Centennial Airport Review Committee did speak to the noise complaints, and we do understand that adding more residents in a noisy area may cause some more noise complaints, but we don't find that that creates an unsafe condition for people to live in. As far as noise and odor and vibration and some of these other items, it's not typical for a private property owner to have to prove the level of effect that an off-site offending party is putting onto yours. And at the end of the day, this is a request for the noise-sensitive zone. This has been the scope of our review and the requests that we've gotten from staff thus far, so that is where our data and findings lie. However, that's not to say that we're not more than welcome any discussions in this or further USR reviews on any other impacts and any other items that you all would feel mad or greatly to the safety of this, this area and this development. I would also like to mention that the 65 DNL sound contour, we understand that that is what was regulated to be the noise-sensitive zone. However, we experienced in the last year of working with the Centennial Airport that that contour continues to grow. We also understand that we share a fence with the airport. We're here respectfully asking for your opinions, but this land use is precluding any other viable land use at a rapid rate. And while I understand that there wasn't a city when the airport was built, there is now, and every day, it does seem like already there are existing residential areas that are in danger of being part of this noise-sensitive zone. Once again, I feel that this is a nuisance. It is something that can be mitigated. It's not a public safety concern. As far as the comments related to safety concerns from our neighbor, I would, we're always willing to collaborate and discuss. I'm not sure what to say. These properties have existed in this format with this shared parking access agreement for years now. I completely understand that the safety of, you know, any business, it absolutely needs to be discussed, but once again, I don't see how that is applicable to our current discussion of a noise-sensitive zone within the CARRI use district. Once again, more than happy to discuss it here, but, or at a further USR hearing as well. Next steps, I think that we have covered all of those. We do have the requested navigation easement drafted and ready for execution upon approval, potentially from, from this board. We've also drafted a landlord disclosure and tenant agreement, which would make every tenant aware of the effects of the airport and kind of what they're signing into before they would ever potentially live there. And once again, any further conditions or follow-up coordination that you would all like to have is welcome. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that presentation. I'd like to open it up to the board for questions and comments, and if the board would permit me to lead on that. Really challenged by this application in many respects. I appreciate the fact that you are a planner by trade and respect this process. We were just in Washington, DC, meeting with the FAA this last week, and I will tell you, this is part of my district, and in my neighborhood, which is at I-25 and Lincoln, I was woken up at 4:30 and 4:00 a.m. this morning by flight school noise. Our neighbors have had it, my district has had it, and I sit on the Centennial Airport Authority Board. Rarely am able to make those meetings because we have the community foundation meetings at the same time, but we do have our staff there, and we're pretty engaged with the flight school mandatory meetings. What I often hear from the wonderful leadership over there is it's hard to take Douglas County seriously if we're consistently approving applications right next to the airport. And, you know, referring to their letter of December 2, 2024, "The effects are noise, smoke, dust, fumes, and vibrations right next to the airport's busiest training runway, and you share a fence line with the airport." So it's getting to be borderline absurd, in my opinion, and I think from a Douglas County perspective, it's important we start looking at our zoning regs, but candidly, this doesn't fit within our zoning regs. This is a waiver. You're asking us to waive the pretty loose regulations we already have. As a former planning commissioner, I also really respect the recommendations of our Planning Commission, which was a denial. So at this point, I certainly am in that same vein. I want to jump to the letters. You submitted five letters of support through Jeanette Baer to our county council. I've been doing this for a while, and what I've noticed is that each one of these letters has the same address and the same font and the same formatting. So can you help me understand who drafted these letters and how they got submitted?
I will pull Mike Swisher, CEO of Homeland, up here.
Great.
He was coordinating some of the delivery of those this week in the background. I wasn't directly.
Okay. Well, just, sir, if you want to, if you want to address that, I think we'd appreciate it, whoever that individual is.
Hi.
Hi, Mike Swisher.
Yeah, so I think you may have heard the question I had of your representative. Generally, when we get letters of support, they are on different types of pages. Sometimes they're notes, they come in differently, there's different fonts, different addresses. Is there a reason that they're all formatted exactly the same with the same address?
My understanding is that the group in the building collaborated together-
Uh huh.
-and then just signed the same letter.
Okay. So do, does the group in this building have a financial interest in us approving this today?
Not at all.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for answering those questions. Again, I don't find those letters persuasive and have some real concerns about the potential externalities facing citizens that would agree to live there. I'm a big property, private property rights proponent. I think the affordability of housing is a big deal. We talk about that a lot. This location would not make, it just would not be habitable for citizens living there, based upon what I'm, what I'm seeing and what I know to be true. In my neighborhood, which is literally miles away from the airport, it's getting to an unhabitability for us, and we, the studies we're talking about with the FAA, I mean, it's, can lead to some really significant health issues for citizens that have heart conditions or, you know, dementia, mental health issues. Being woken up all night, sleep is valuable, and, you know, being interrupted in sleep all night is really a dangerous precursor for the health and well-being of our citizens, which is our statutory charge. I'll reserve further comments pending my, the board's questions, and certainly would open it up to any citizen comment.
I do have a comment back to that. If I am allowed to spare, should I?
I think you can wait for now. Let me open it up to my colleague for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and not a lot of questions. I'm going through the packet here from the Planning Commission meeting and seeing if anything changed. It doesn't look like it did, but also reading the, the letters that came in that showed in July of last year, there were 15,142 flights- of last year, there were 15,142 flights directly, pretty much directly, I think it says overhead. Find that here. Just went past it. One month there. Let's see, in July of 2024, the busiest month for the airport, this address saw the following number of flights within one quarter mile, within a quarter mile of the property. It's 15,142, which is nearly 500 flights per day within a quarter mile. That's the busiest month. I'm wondering if there's, if that's just an, if that month is kind of an outlier in the rest of the years. I'm guessing the rest of the year is not too much more quiet. Maybe there could be comment to that eventually.
Commissioner, are you, my comments were more of a statement. Are you looking for an answer to that line of questioning?
No, I don't think so. It did put in the busiest month of the year. I was wondering, in, I don't know if the data is even available, what the lightest month of the year might be, but I think in any case, it's somewhat alarming to see nearly 500 flights per day right nearly on the property.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional comments? Okay. So with that, I know our colleague needed a brief recess and will be rejoining us shortly. I'll take the time to open it up for any citizen comment, any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item. And Ms. Campbell, I'm going to pause and say we do appreciate you. You have commented on many items today in our last meeting and in this one.
I have a comment, Dave. I'm still educated. I can comment on this.
Ma'am, I'm going to, I'm going to make a comment before you get started.
You can limit it to one minute. I'll make it 30 seconds, Abe.
Jill, I'm going to ask for you to pause before you begin commenting, and I'm going to just have some guardrails around this.
You don't want me to speak on this item? Is that your opinion? I will sit down.
I'm not, if you could respect this body to make some comments before you begin.
I thought you said you were open to citizen comment, so.
Ma'am, if you would, I'm not asking you to sit down. You're welcome to make comment, but I would like you to make sure that you are confining your comments to this particular issue and not providing external personal comments related to your life and your history, although we appreciate that.
It wasn't. I was respecting the fact that you could hold the gun. So this, when they're looking at the, I'll talk quickly, Abe.
You have three minutes, but just keep it to the comments here.
So the east buffer of that, so the airport is the end of your building. It runs east-west, correct?
And ma'am, this is not a time to question the applicant, if you can just comment.
So what I'm looking at, when I'm looking, the same thing, the DNL levels too high, that would drive me crazy, but you also have developmental pathways right there. And if you're talking about the health of our citizens and the lack of sleep, you've got, those are development pathways are the same one that you house, that young man, that are special needs, like my daughter, that go there on a frequent basis and access that. And you also have cholera, Christian, just south of that same building, correct? And so then the other building that, have you done DNL, like a data analytic analysis?
And again, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to refrain from asking questions of the applicant. You can make your comments to us.
I'm wondering if there's a data analytic report that shows the increase in the DNL levels over a very short period of time, that will have more and more flights out of there for sure. And so would that be indicative of the progression of the high levels of DNL that would surpass the 65 at the airport to 75, which they're showing that sometimes it was 50, and that they have vibrations that shake the ground? And like you said, you didn't sleep the next night. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, thank you for restraining your comments to this agenda, and we do appreciate that comment. Any additional citizen comment?
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Zach Gaypart. I'm the Noise and Environmental Specialist at Centennial Airport, and I'm here on behalf of the Arapahoe County Public Airport Authority. I'm here to respectfully urge this board to adopt the planning commission's recommendation and deny the CARE waiver request for 327 in Vernice Drive. First, I want to sincerely thank both the Douglas County Commissioners and the Planning Commission for your thoughtful review of this issue. This issue can have far-reaching implications, both for future residents and for the long-term viability of Centennial Airport. Let me start by being clear. This proposed residential development is expressly prohibited under Section 1906.02.1 of the Centennial Airport Review Area Regulations in the Douglas County Zoning Resolution. This is a clear-cut case where residential development is not allowed under current rules. The CARE was designed to do two things: support smart, compatible development in areas around Centennial Airport, and protect both the airport's operations and the quality of life for nearby residents. It's a carefully constructed balance. Approving this waiver could potentially tip that balance in the wrong direction. Let's talk about location. This parcel sits within the 65 DNL noise contour and borders the 70 DNL noise contour. For those less familiar, DNL, or day-night average sound level, is a standard used by the FAA to measure long-term noise exposure. The FAA categorically defines areas above 65 DNL as incompatible with residential development. It's not a suggestion, it's not a guideline, it's an established threshold where noise becomes a significant concern. This parcel shares a fence line with the airport itself, a situation that both we and the FAA consider a worst-case scenario for placing residential housing. We are not speculating about the impacts here. The FAA has submitted formal opposition to this proposal, citing clear safety and quality of life risks for future residents. Beyond noise, this site also faces exposure to aircraft-related pollutants, including fumes, dust, smoke, and vibrations, some of which contain lead. These are persistent, unavoidable elements of life adjacent to a major airport. In fact, in just one month, in July of 2024, over 15,000 operations occurred within one quarter mile of this parcel. That's hundreds of takeoffs and landings every single day. The sheer frequency of operations at its location introduces not only physical health risk, but also concerns over mental fatigue and chronic stress. Even soundproofing used to bring interior noise levels down to 45, that's only inside with all windows closed. Outdoor spaces would offer no escape from the sound of constant aircraft activity. This is not just about one development, it's about precedent. Granting a waiver here opens the door to future exceptions, and before long, the very intent of the CARE regulations could be undermined. In closing, we believe this proposed development simply does not align with what CARE was designed to protect the health, safety, livability, and thriving airport system that benefits all of Douglas County. So once again, thank you for your time and the opportunity to comment here today.
Thank you, Mr. Gaypart, and thank you for your wonderful work at Centennial Airport. Certainly well appreciated.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you for that. Any additional citizen comment?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Alan Hamer. I am the co-owner of Radix Metasystems, who is the occupant of the building just to the north of this proposed development. We own the parking lot that will be traversed by everyone trying to access the back parking lot owned by the 327 property. We're very concerned about how much extra traffic will be going through our property from the street all the way to their back parking lot we own and must maintain, but that's not the topic today. The topic today, I realize, is all about the noise. I did a simple Google search of the noise complaints for Denver International Airport since 2016, and the count is amazing. You go backwards from 2022, and there are in excess of 2,700 noise complaints, and this is in an area that is very well-known to have been an airport before a lot of those developments popped up. So I would agree with Centennial's assessment that the complaints are likely to go up. We have been living there now for years as a business occupant. We see the flights that are going every single day. Sometimes there are military aircraft doing touch-and-goes on a regular basis using this airport for training. Having been a B-52 avionics tech when I was active duty, I can tell you that the vibration from those engines nearby is significant, no doubt about it. I just think this is the wrong use for this property, absolutely the wrong use. I appreciate you reviewing this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Amanda Smith. I'm a resident in Douglas County. I wanted to actually make comments I think that were brought up during the presentation today from the planning representative for homeland development. As Al mentioned, the touch-and-goes get pretty loud with the F-18s in particular. I recognize when he said that if they, they believed that all of the Douglas County zoning resolution requirements have been met, and if they hadn't been met, that the packet would not have passed staff review and we wouldn't all be here today. I would have to then question how on earth we got to the point where the planning commission recommended overwhelmingly to deny it, and the comments they made at the time were that they met, they either did not meet all of them, and in some cases, several of the representatives, the commissioners stated they didn't meet any of the required points, so I wanted to just point that out as well. I recognize that they don't believe the noise complaints constitute a safety concern. However, it does burden the airport to respond to all of those, and as DIA has been representative, they, DI was built in, what, '95, I think? They've had so many tens of thousands of complaints. The last thing that I wanted to say was that the building itself does have several commercial tenants now, a number of different companies. And so the assertion, in my opinion, that the residential is the only feasible way to ensure the building is viably used, doesn't really hold much water. It's being viably used by several commercial entities. And the assertion that residential would somehow revitalize the community and bring families into the area doesn't quite track with the other half of that coin where they assert that, well, we don't have any outdoor spaces, therefore the noise won't be such an issue. So to state that, well, we're bringing in families and won't it be amazing, but we're keeping all those families indoors, none of it quite seems to make sense, and it seems like the, the arguments sort of are all over the map based upon which, in fact, you know, what their, their goal is to achieve there. And so I just wanted to make a couple of statements there, and also remind everyone here that the FAA and the Centennial Airport attested that the flights next year would be only increasing, and so the 500 or so flights per day will only be going north from there. And the safety issue, I think, was specifically related to them being on the fence line, children in a parking lot unattended, for instance, would create the safety issues in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment? Okay, not seeing any additional citizen comment in the room. I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment online. Troy, do we have any citizen comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I wonder if we could ask staff to go back to the approval criteria, please? Thank you. Commissioner, would you like to begin, or? I shall begin then. I actually really appreciate what the applicant is trying to do here, and I'm very supportive of it. I think we've had several applications within vicinity of this property that have had very similar concerns brought forward. I'm not sure I can support the application at this time, though, just due to the fact that I, I do take issue with the applicant's analysis compared to staff analysis and then the analysis that we've received from the airport, as well as the FAA pertaining to noise levels. I couldn't help but notice the very rapid move by the applicant through the peak noise levels, inside noise levels, that I understand are singular events, and so not a recognized, I believe you said, not a nationally recognized standard. I do think that's significant in this instance, and I don't think I can say yes to meeting condition number three. I don't find condition number four to be compelling in the applicant's favor. So I, I'm very aware of where the market situation is in properties, but the applicant did not present a viable argument for being a yes on condition number four. All other conditions, actually, I'm, I'm okay with. I think the applicant has done a good job and probably has a good plan that meet those, but it is incumbent upon us, and of course, if my colleagues wish to have the county attorney correct me on the statement, we really must agree that every one of these condition standards are things that we can say yes to. So I'm sorry, I'm, I'm short to conditions that we, to, to our approval standards to meet, and I do not find that the conditions presented mitigate those. So at this time, I cannot support this application.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Teal. We're going to stay at Commissioner Comment for right now. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Teal. I largely agree with your analysis that, you know, oftentimes when we do see first-floor commercial and above floors residential, that's actually something that I often really, it's kind of a cool way to live, and something I have been in supportive in the past. However, I, back to my legislative days, I remember CDPHE briefing us at the Capitol about increased levels of lead in the, in children that live near airports, and it's, I don't know, I haven't reviewed those studies in some time. Feel like if I were to approve this, I would need to review those studies and feel that public safety is not being put at risk. Just the number of flights, it's like nearly 500 flights per day. That's going to be basically right in the backyard of this. And then there's questions in my mind about the only parking access is through another private lot, that I find somewhat questionable and, and, but that's something I think we could go through, but I just, I have number two there, the public safety, health is a concern for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. I agree with both of you. I think you both brought some excellent analysis based upon the approval standards in 122.03 at Sequoia. I don't find that any of these provisions have been met sufficient for us to be able to approve a waiver. And again, I am convinced that we really need, on a macro level, to be thinking about, you know, our county policies associated with the airport. Again, we have a great partner, I mean, of course, this is external to today's application, but we do have an amazing partner in Centennial Airport that is working with the flight schools and really making great progress, I think, as a county coming alongside them and ensuring we have, we honor our own approval standards, as we are today, is an important first step for the future of our residents. We are very supportive of private property rights and of developers and those who are seeking to take the enterprise risk to do something great in our community, but there are guardrails, and it is our zoning resolution. So Jeanette is raising her hand, yes?
I just wanted, wanted to clarify that there isn't some crucible that applicants go through us to get to you. We provide the process, we tell them what the standards are, we make sure all the legal requirements are meant for notice, and when we provide an assessment, we provide, I think, a nuanced assessment where we, we look at all sides of an issue. But I do take issue with saying that somehow staff has approved this or made it so that it came forward with all these things being met, because that is, that's not the case.
Thank you for that clarification from staff. Bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion. We can, if the board would like, we can have the applicant respond to any citizen comment.
Or if we should move forward with the motion. Thank you. I believe that public safety concerns, once again, we have done everything that we can to provide all of the science-backing design and professional opinion to prove that. The only context that we have in which to base that off of is county standards, and so, again, through that process, we, there was nothing that was requested of us or any findings that did not meet county standards, but was fully expected to be part of our next USR hearing. And, and once again, you know, we have to go through probably very similar criteria for that, and would be back to the board. As far as item number three, I do believe that this is unique to this property and is unique to all the properties that share a border with Centennial Airport, and now any airport that is within, you know, a few miles from the airport. That, that zone district does exist, but the, the metric that is used to prohibit land use is dynamic and is ever-expanding and doesn't seem to have any over and is ever-expanding and doesn't seem to have any oversight or regulation and is precluding the most viable use. And I do say that as a professional who has done my homework, not as an opinion. The non-economic hardship, this is one where I would love to sit in a room and have philosophical conversation all day, but to what I had just spoken to, there is a very real non-economic hardship that the airport is placing on every surrounding property. And there are people who already live in this neighborhood, there are people who work there every day, go to school there, there are people who choose to go and play 36 rounds of golf. I do not agree with the finding that somehow those people are any less apt to be affected by the airport than somebody who lives there. This is an urban area where people exist 24 hours a day and the effects are going to be the same on them no matter what they are using that space for. Here we are just trying to look at an underutilized space, fixing a problem that we also all know to be exist. Once again, I understand that there is nuance to all of these, completely respect all of your decisions and thoughts, thank you for sharing those with me, but I did just want to follow up on those two items.
And thank you so much for making those comments and responding. We do appreciate that. Any additional questions, comments, or discussion or a motion from the board?
Yeah, I mean, understanding that the applicant is here for a reason, there's, and this board has absolutely no interest in getting in anyone's way to capitalize on their property or to make a living. That's great, but you're, the logic that you applied is flawed. You can't say the conditions upon which the request for waivers are based are unique to the property and then say, and it's unique for every property in that zoning area. You can't say that. That is contradictory. And so, no, your logic is flawed. Furthermore, you know, non-economic hardship, we're not telling you to knock the building down. That's not, that's not what's being done here. You're coming in and you're saying, listen, you have a use that the county has agreed to, that the county has essentially made a promise for. We want to change that use. To get to that use, first, we need a waiver and then, second, you need a use by special review. The bottom line is, we're not telling you to knock it down, okay? We're not telling you to bulldoze it and, you know, blacktop it so that there's no safety concerns, that there's no interference with the airport. And furthermore, you can't, you can't come forward and say, hey, the airport affects that entire area. That's not the subject of this meeting. The subject of this meeting is, can we, can we give a waiver for a multifamily residential in this area that right now, according to our zoning resolution and according to how we have done the zoning in this area, that answer is no. And so, you know, listen, I, hey, you've done a great job. You've done a great job for your boss, you've done a great job for your clientele, but I don't agree with the logic that the applicant's last statement applied and I still cannot support this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move, or I do move, to deny zoning resolution waiver for Inverness filing 9 Lot 3 because it does not meet all the approval criteria with the conditions as presented. This is project file US 2024-011.
Yeah, I'm going to second that.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that application is denied. With that, we will move on to the next item for our public hearing, which is item 3C, Cross Mountain Zone Map Change, project file DR 2025-001. Trevor Bedford, once again, senior planner, presenting for staff. Trevor?
Trevor Bedford, representing Planning Services. The project number is DR 2025-001 and the property owners are Leanne Davis and Andrew Frederick Clark. The request is for a zone map change from Agricultural 1 to Open Space Conservation for a 17.9 acre portion of a property. The zone district map change process is described in zoning resolution, section 1112. The zone map change falls under rezoning of land to Open Space Conservation District. The process begins with the submission of a request. The zone map change request is then processed by staff. Following a review period, the request is considered by the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. The Larkspur Fire Protection District objected to the request due to the potential for reduced tax revenue. However, this is not a criteria that is considered in rezoning requests. No other referral agencies objected. One nearby property owner did submit written support of the request. The Planning Commission heard the request at its June 2, 2025, public hearing and recommended a vote to, recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. No public spoke at the hearing. The site identified by the red star is located in Southern Douglas County within the CMP Cherry Valley Non-Urban Subregion. The 55.2 acre property is outlined in red. It is generally surrounded by agricultural and residential properties. The portion to be rezoned is in the northeast corner. This aerial map shows the location of the property in red and the area outlined in white shows the approximate area to be rezoned to Open Space Conservation. This exhibit shows the surveyed area requested to be rezoned to Open Space Conservation along with topography that shows the top of Cross Mountain within that zone. The applicant owns three agricultural parcels adjacent to this. The subject property is approximately 55.2 acres and contains Cross Mountain. The owners wish to preserve the top of Cross Mountain from development in the event that the property is sold in the future. They have identified the area necessary to do that. Staff has evaluated the zone map change request. The map change brings rezones property to Open Space Conservation District to protect few sheds and environmentally sensitive areas from future development. In staff's assessment, this request meets the eligibility criteria. Section 112.06 of the zoning resolution sets forth the board's action as a part of a zone map change request. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available to take questions on the staff report at this time if the board wishes. Otherwise, the applicant has a representative available as well.
Trevor, thank you for that. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, and I have none either. We'll welcome up the applicant to make their presentation, please. Welcome, sir. If you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Thank you. My name is Rob Herman. I'm here to represent the property owners. I'm a real estate agent with Whitetail Properties Real Estate. I've been working with these property owners for just over two years, working, they are planning on selling the property in the future, but they overall are just looking to conserve the wildlife habitat. In my time working on the property, I've seen everything, elk, whitetail deer, mule deer, they all tend to cab and fawn on the property, the top of the buttes also. I am a resident of Larkspur. I live just under five miles as the crow flies from the property and I'm lucky enough to get to view the property from my bedroom window. So, you know, overall, they're just looking to preserve things, keep a McMansion from being built on top of this property and I think overall, it's a great thing for Douglas County and everybody that enjoys the beautiful views we have.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
And none for me either. With that, we'll open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, it's always great when our property owners in a county that is, you know, obviously we see a lot of residential development, we see a lot of commercial development, we always know it's a sirensong for property owners to look to capitalize on their land. It's something we do support them doing, but it's really nice when we get a property owner in who wants to conserve the land, particularly in the southern half of the district where we do see a lot of pressure coming up from the south in El Paso County. So I think this is great. If it pleases the board, I have a motion to approve Cross Mountain Zone Map Change, project file DR 2025-001.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I would just echo those sentiments. I believe the legal approval criteria has been met and will be in support. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and thanks for being here. With that, we're going to move to our final item for today. It's item 3D, 2096, South Interstate 25 Zone Map Change, project file DR 2025-002. Matt Jacobowski, chief planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Matt.
Matt Jacobowski, representing Planning Services. The request is a zone map change to 2096, South I-25, project number DR 2025-002. The request changes the light industrial and agricultural 1 zone boundaries on an existing split zone parcel, another zone map change here today. Per zoning resolution, section 112, zone map changes can be processed. This zone map change brings the parcel into compliance with the county comprehensive master plan, which is the bottom bullet on the slide and one of the procedural criteria for a zone map change. A zone map change is processed by county staff for consideration by the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. In this case, no referral agencies objected to the proposal and no homeowners associations or public commented at the referral period. The Planning Commission heard the request at its June 2, 2025, public hearing and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Planning Commissioners asked some questions regarding the history of the zoning of the property. No public spoke at the hearing. The site identified by a red star is located in Central Douglas County within the Castle Rock Municipal Planning Area of the comprehensive master plan. The site is located approximately 2,000 feet south of the I-25 and Crystal Valley Parkway interchange. It's actually on the I-25 frontage road. You can see the split zoning of the parcel with LI being purple and A1 the lighter color. A1 surrounds the property. And looking closer at an aerial, you can also see the unique nature of the split zone line, which actually, at this point, splits an existing indoor riding arena and barn. Again, to the west, I-25 and the frontage road, large lot residential surrounds the property. Here's Plum Creek, there's a vacant property just to the north. Before you, as the proposed zone map change exhibit, the proposal would increase by changing the split zone boundary, would increase the size of the LI zone by approximately four acres, but contending with the unique situation of the building, it creates a more logical zone boundary for the uses that have existed on the property. As background, the LI portion of the site was zone transitional in 1955 while the remainder of the parcel and surrounding parcels were considered agricultural. In 1982, the LI portion of the site was classified as LI from transitional and the agricultural portion remained. The zone boundary from the research that I've completed was placed really along the section line, so that's the distinction, the LI portion was in that area and then the A1 went below the section line. In 1971, the current 14.87 acre parcel was established by Deed, again with the split zoning. And throughout the 1970s, various structures on the site were constructed, not every structure, but the barn and riding arena that I've discussed a few times tonight has a date from the Building Department of 1972. So mostly the other structures were constructed around that time. In 1993, a site plan was approved to capture existing industrial uses on the LI side of the property, which is consistent with some of the historic uses that occurred. In my research, from what I can tell, there may have been a historic industrial type use on the property which predicated that transitional zoning in 1955 on the LI portion of the parcel. In 2024, a site plan application for RV storage was proposed. That's the current property owner. That application is in process and that's partly why we're here, because of the unique nature of the split zone. Staff has evaluated the zone map change request. In staff's assessment, the existing zone boundary limits LI use of the existing building and creates a site design and traffic flow issue for LI development. Since the Castle Rock Municipal Planning Area of which this property is located assumes urban-level development and urban-type uses on the property, the zone map change brings the site into greater compliance with the comprehensive master plan and therefore that bullet I showed you on the previous slide. Section 11206 of the zoning resolution sets forth the board's action as part of a zone map change request. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to take questions on the staff report at this time if the board wishes. I do have the applicant here today. They don't have a formal presentation but are here if there are any questions you have of their use of the property and how they've evolved.
Okay. Thanks for that presentation, Matt. So with no applicant presentation, I'll ask the board if there's any questions of staff or the applicant.
No questions.
Actually, I do, could you go back to the slide showing the current split between light industrial and agricultural and then the future, that one right there?
The existing aerial with the existing zone lines?
That's existing and then?
Yeah, that's existing.
Then that slide right there?
That's, and that's proposed, right? So the larger purple area, which is approximately four acres greater by the zone shift, is what's proposed and this is the proposed exhibit.
But, and it's all one property?
It's all one parcel, correct.
Okay. And there's a desire to keep the southern portion agriculture?
The applicant might be able to provide additional information, however, that's my understanding is they want to be able to have a more practical use of the LI side for some proposed RV storage, but the A1 would remain as shown here.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. How did this turn out in the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval.
Okay, unanimous approval. And then, is there a reason this wouldn't be like a rezone as opposed to a map, a zone map change?
Well, the rezone would be a more difficult process with different approval standards that creates some problem because there's not central water and sewer here. So in this case, the applicant was trying to correct the kind of impracticality of the current zone line and the fact that it goes through the building.
Yeah. So just a little history, how did this come to us? Was this a zoning infraction that was being corrected or how did this show up?
I do understand there is a zoning violation case in process, but the applicant is remedying the situation with the site plan in process for the RV storage.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just looking at the map, that is immediately what dawned on me is that the portion that's in A1 obviously would be in violation. So this is an attempt to correct maybe a ding from a Michael Carey on zoning and get it into a better conformity.
Correct. The RV storage use is allowed in LI, but on the A1 side would not be.
Okay. Did we get any referral comments or complaints from neighbors, adjacent neighbors on this?
There were no comments at all from neighbors, no objections. I had one phone call from a neighbor that really just wanted to understand what was happening but had no comment or objection.
Okay. Can you go back to the 3D map? Yeah. Okay. Would the applicant like to make any comments at all? Where is the applicant? Okay. I don't think we have any questions. Just want to make sure you had an opportunity. This is your application, so if you had anything to share with us. Okay, sir. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any other discussion or a motion.
Well, it would appear, and I may be incorrect, but it seems as if the RV parking area has outgrown the current light industrial and so it needs to be moved just slightly in order to? order to accommodate the current use of the property, which seems like a fine move for me.
You know, it's, I think it's telling that obviously there's a building there, and maybe it was wrong for that building to be built, given the zoning. On the other hand, it's there. I suppose we could stand on the letter of our zoning resolution and say, "No way, Jose", and kind of like I told the prior applicant, go tell them to knock it down. But, I mean, I drive by this property weekly, and I got to tell you, I don't live very far from this location. I don't, I don't have a compelling reason to be anything but supportive of this application. I figure, you know, we can be bureaucratic and stand on the letter of the law and tell the applicant, "So sorry, you know, you need to fix it." Or we can look at the applicant like a neighbor and basically do what we need to do to fix the code and fix the zoning line in this instance, and keep it to where the applicant can continue to do business and be a good neighbor.
Yeah, and I agree with both my fellow commissioners. I think that that makes a lot of sense. I'm not thrilled with the idea of a building being built when it shouldn't have been, begin with, and saying, "Hey, county, fix it. We're violating your zoning." But I'm not getting the sense that it would cause a hardship or be a concern to any adjacent neighbors. And I think, to your point, George, it would cause a significant undue hardship on the applicant to say, "Hey, go knock it down and make it, put it in conformity. I can't imagine what it would take to do that." So I think, you know, leaning on the good graces of the county to perhaps make an exception and be a good neighbor is something I would be supportive of.
Yeah, just to offer a little bit of additional color, where you see the line, if you draw a line between the L and the I and straight south, street south between the A and the 1, you actually have a drop in elevation there. So everything you see to the right side of this property, actually, you really can't see that from either I-25 or the Frontage Road, because it's the creek that drops, I would say significantly, but honestly, I don't know. I've never driven onto this property to go find out. But it's, and it's also depressed compared to the neighboring properties to the east. So it's kind of in a depression in the earth, so even with the proposed use, yeah, I'm just, with the way the line redraw goes, I'm just not seeing it being a nuisance to other property owners. And then, of course, Commissioners, we don't just plan for today, we plan for the future. Again, this is very close to Castle Rock, and it is a light industrial area. We are supportive of economic development in the county. This owner may not own this property for the rest of their lives. The next property owner may wish to capitalize on this property and bring light industrial commerce into the county. So again, I have a hard time justifying a no on this motion, on this request.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
No. If it pleases the board, I move to approve 2096 South Interstate 25 Zone Map Change, project file DR 2025-002.
Second. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations. You bet. With that, our next land use meeting, public hearing, will be held on Tuesday, June 24, 2025, at 2:30 p.m. We are adjourned.